And please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna do a formal roll call. Counselor Oje.
Present.
Counselor Riker.
Here.
Counselor Lovelace.
Present.
Counselor King.
Here.
Counselor Younger.
Here.
Counselor De La Grange.
Here.
And DJ Fager is absent. At this time, I'll entertain a motion regarding our agenda.
I would like to make a motion to move item 2A to executive session. And this is per advice from our legal counsel to a future date.
Seconded by Counselor Riker. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Lovelace.
I don't really have a discussion, but I just thought it might be appropriate just to read what it is. So people who didn't have the agenda in front of them might know that that is. 2A is the ordinance amending Grants Pass Municipal Code by creating Chapter 5.58, Regulation of Humanitarian and Serious Events on Publicly Owned Property.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Oje, you made the vote. How do you vote?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Lovelace?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
De La Grange?
No.
Oh, and Pell is also absent. Okay, motion passes six to zero. Six to one, excuse me. I can't count. Five to one. We have two absent. All right. Next up, we're going to do a proclamation regarding Arbor Day. And I believe we have our arborist, our urban forester, James is here to receive the proclamation. Wait just a second here for it to be put on the screen. There we go. Whereas Grants Pass has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for the 36th year. And whereas Grants Pass recognizes trees are a community resource that can cut cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, create oxygen, mitigate stormwater, and enhance the beauty of our city. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, promote tourism, and are a source of joy. And whereas Arbor Month is recognized in April by the state of Oregon. And whereas the city of Grants Pass is planting 11 new trees in our downtown corridor during Arbor Month. Now therefore, I, Sarah Bristol, Mayor of the City of Grants Pass, Oregon, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Arbor Month in the city of Grants Pass, and urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and to support the city's community forestry program. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Thank you for being here tonight, James. Did you want to say anything about Arbor Day?
Oh, yes. We planted a Ginkgo tree outside of Allendale Elementary along Allen Creek Trail. We had several third graders were in attendance, and it was a wonderful time. And I wanted to thank those of you on the council and Mayor Bristol and even some of our city department heads for attending.
Thank you. Yeah, that was a nice little event out there that kids enjoyed planting the tree and taking some home to their families as well. And we're gonna follow up with, we're moving a couple of items on our agenda tonight. So next, we're going to cover council action items B and C that have to do with resolutions regarding some heritage trees. And are you also making the presentation, James? Perfect.
All right. This is concerning the heritage tree nomination for Riverside Park and the Chamber of Commerce. Going to review the subject in summary. So in March 2024, there was a recommendation of the Urban Tree Advisory Committee to designate the Don Redwoods, Meta sequoia glyptostrevoidace, at Riverside Park in the Chamber of Commerce as heritage trees. This designation would recognize the significant community benefit of the tree due to its age, size, species, health, cultural value, and historical value. Its relationship to the council goals are to maintain, operate, and expand our infrastructure to meet community needs by enhancing our community's tree canopy. Some background on heritage trees. The purpose of the heritage tree section of the municipal code is to quote, "to recognize, foster appreciation, and provide for protection of heritage trees." That's in Grants Pass Municipal Code 10.02.010. The city council designated the first heritage tree in Grants Pass on April 2021 on public property. Those were the Martin Redwoods in Martin Park. And the first private heritage tree was designated in November 2021, which was a black oak at the scenic overlook at the end of southwest Fifth Street. Currently, we do have seven heritage trees, and they are located at four different sites. The process and city council designation of heritage trees follows a procedure. Urban Tree Advisory Committee reviews all nominations, along with a staff report on the tree. Staff report is prepared by myself. The committee decides if they wish to recommend the tree to the city council for designation, at which point the city council reviews the committee's recommendations and considers any testimony by interested people. City council may designate the tree as a heritage tree by resolution. There are a few protections and regulations for heritage trees. Heritage trees must be kept free of certain prohibited activities as detailed in the Grants Pass Municipal Tree Code. That's 10.02.060. And some examples of prohibited activities include filling or piling materials at or within the canopy drip line. This is to protect the critical root zone, which contributes to the structural stability of the tree. Posting signage or devices to the tree, topping the tree, pruning without a tree permit, or removal without a tree permit, or any excavation in the drip line without a tree permit, which is also known as root pruning. So the two trees in question are both Don Redwoods. They are located on public property, both of them. Top one is at the Chamber of Commerce, and the bottom one is at Riverside Park. They were both nominated by the Urban Tree Advisory Committee. Any restrictions and requirements set forth to protect heritage trees are already being met by the way that we manage our public trees. So one of the reasons this species was nominated was because it is of unique cultural value to the state of Oregon. The Don Redwoods are unique because they were thought to be extinct, and they're actually the state fossil of Oregon. It is also a deciduous conifer, meaning that it loses its needles every year, in contrast to most evergreen conifers, which retain their needles. This tree was thought to be extinct, but it was rediscovered in a remote valley of China in the 1940s. It re-entered cultivation in the U.S. in the 1950s. As you can see in this photo, this is before the needles came back in, because they're coming in right now. The Riverside Don Redwood is approximately 90 feet in height. It is 42 inches in diameter. It has a critical root zone of 42 feet in a radius around the tree, so that would be 84 feet in diameter. It is one of the largest diameters in the city. So this is the largest Don Redwood that we have. Its age is estimated to be about 50 years, and it's estimated that it was planted in the 1970s. Here at the Chamber of Commerce, this Don Redwood is a little bit smaller. Its height is 67 feet. Its diameter is 30 inches. Its critical root zone is 30-foot radius, or 60-foot diameter. We estimate this one to be about 40 years old, and that it was probably planted in the 1980s. These estimates come from the approximate size of the tree, as well as construction around the trees, and when the trees entered into production in the U.S. These are two other photos of the Redwoods, the Don Redwoods in question. The one on the left is from Riverside Park. The one on the right is the Chamber of Commerce. The cost implication for approving the heritage tree nomination would be that the city would provide a plaque at the nominal cost. It'd be approximately $300 per site would be covered in the park's budget. So the call to action is at the council's discretion. And the alternatives are to move to approve the resolution designating the Don Redwood at Riverside Park as a heritage tree. You could also approve the resolution for the Don Redwood at the Chamber of Commerce as a heritage tree. You may deny either or both proposed heritage tree designations, or move to revisit either or both nominations at a later meeting date. Any questions?
Thank you, James. Do you have any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Riker.
Thank you, James. You mentioned that if one is pruning a tree, you need a tree permit. And if you've engaged in a licensed arborist, who is the person to get the permit?
That would be us, or, with the one exception, the Chamber of Commerce is occasionally pruned by Pacific Power. They would be the ones applying for the permit at that point.
But if you're a person, I mean, just a private individual in the tree... Okay, so you're saying the heritage trees have to have this, but that's the only case? Okay.
Correct. It's not any tree, it's just these heritage trees.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Is there anyone from the public who wanted to speak on behalf of this issue? No? All right, I'll turn it back to council for discussion. Valerie?
Yeah, I think it's wonderful. I learned a lot about the Don Redwood. I had no idea there was a deciduous redwood tree. So thank you. And indeed, they are wonderful trees. So I'm gonna make a motion at the same time for both. That's okay? I'm gonna move to approve the resolution designated the Don Redwood located at the Chamber of Commerce and the Don Redwood located at the Riverside Park as heritage trees.
Seconded by Counselor King. Any discussion? Joel?
Well, I just want to recognize James' leadership as a city forester and in managing our urban forest. And this is just one of the programs that he's done, planting the trees with the schoolkids. And it's an important component of our city. So thank you, James.
All right, without further discussion. Counselor Lovelace, you made the vote to approve both trees as heritage trees. How do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
Counselor Oje?
Yes.
Counselor Riker?
Yes.
Counselor Younger?
Yes.
Counselor De La Grange?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. And thank you for those timely presentations for Arbor Month, too. That's our celebration. Next up, we are going to go to item 2D on the agenda. It's to consider a resolution that would approve an application to name the stadium at Agnew Lidle Field in Reinhardt Volunteer Park as the Chapman Reese Stadium. Hello, Josh.
Hello, council. Good evening. Josh Hopkins, Park Superintendent. Here today to discuss a resolution for naming the stadium at Agnew Lidle Field in Reinhardt Volunteer Park, the Chapman Reese Stadium. For subject and summary, this resolution authorizes the installation of a sign and naming the stadium at Agnew Lidle Field in Reinhardt Volunteer Park, the Chapman Reese Stadium. In relationship to council goals, this supports council's goal of leadership by publicly recognizing and honoring the service of dedicated community volunteers. For the background on this topic, in December of 2020, city council updated the policy for naming park facilities, areas, and other dedications. The policy provides a mechanism for the public to nominate individuals for outstanding civic service. They submit an application. The director reviews the application, make sure it meets the application criteria. If it meets the application criteria, the request is presented to the Parks Advisory Committee for approval or denial of the recommendation. If it is approved through the PAC, then it comes to council with a resolution for a recommendation. In August of 2023, Jay Reese submitted an application for adding the Chapman Reese Ballpark to the Agnew Lidle Field sign. In the December 14, 2023 meeting, the Parks Advisory Committee reviewed the application and recommended making a change so that it would be for naming the stadium and not adding it to the actual sign of the field. They did this to try to prevent any sort of issues with the field already having a name, and they felt as though naming the stadium itself would be a good compromise, as well as a nice way to honor the Chapmans and the Reeses for all that they've done for baseball throughout, you know, the history of all sports parks back then, but Reinhardt now. March 14, 2024, the PAC reviewed the amended application and recommended approving Jay Reese's naming application for the stadium at the Agnew Lidle Field in Reinhardt Volunteer Park as the Chapman Reese Stadium for council consideration. Here is an example of what the sign that is proposed to go on the front of the stadium. The sign would be affixed between the windows and the American Legion sign right on that white spot in between. This sign is consistent with the way the sign for the Agnew Lidle Field is made out of metal with the baseball and the bats. For cost implications, per the policy, the cost is the sole responsibility of the person or organization requesting the naming memorial or dedication, the only thing for the city is staff resources of, you know, taking things in front of parks committees and things like that. For the call to action, it's at council's discretion. Alternatives would be to approve the application as submitted, make changes to the application, or deny the application. The recommended action, per the policy, the Parks Advisory Committee recommends approving Jay Reese's naming application for the stadium at Agnew Lidle Field in Reinhardt Volunteer Park as the Chapman Reese Stadium. And a potential motion is listed there. If council has any questions.
Thank you, Josh. Council, do you have any questions? No questions. Okay. Was there anyone from the public who wanted to speak on behalf of this request?
Jay Reese is present.
Thank you. Mr. Reese, did you want to speak? Please step forward, and you can use this microphone here so that everyone can hear you. I just learned that I'm older than some of our heritage trees, so I'm starting to feel your pain.
Yeah. My goodness. I haven't been up in front of such great people and good people in a long time. I'm not a politician. I'm just baseball-minded. I've been involved along with many great people in the city of Grants Pass and the county in building Agnew Lidle Field several years ago. So down at the old park, Sam Agnew Park on the other side of town. I was pretty involved in that. To tell you, I'm not lying to you, but I'm 86 years old, and I still can go around the bases at least dragging my feet a little bit. Other than that, I'm so pleased with the people that were involved in allowing this to happen. It means a lot to myself, to my brother, who put many years in baseball. The old T-Birds years ago, semi-pro baseball team. He's involved 40 years, so between Mike Reese, myself, and my brother, we're over 118 years of baseball. So I don't want to brag anymore, okay? So just to let you know, we really appreciate all of you, every one of you. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak on behalf of this tonight? All right, I'll turn it back to council for discussion. Rob?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I just, by circumstance, ran into Rick Chapman today, and I asked him if he was going to be coming tonight. And right now, he's actually at an organizational meeting for Nuggets Baseball. And he said he wouldn't give it up for coming to get the notoriety or the mention, but his commitment was to the team.
Valerie?
Yeah, my own son went through the baseball program, and yeah, this is a long time coming. And like I said, Rick is a good friend of mine. He's put a lot of time and effort. I still remember going down there, and him and his dog, I can't think of his name, but I always remember them being down there. So I'm just gonna go ahead and move to approve the resolution for the application to name the stadium at the Agnew Light Field in Reinhardt Volunteer Park, the Chapman Reese Stadium.
Seconded by Rick. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Counselor Lovelace, you made the motion. How do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
Counselor Oje?
Yes.
Counselor Riker?
Yes.
And Counselor Younger?
Yes.
Counselor De La Grange?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you to the Chapman and Reese families for your work in youth baseball here in the county for, it sounds like, many, many years. All right, now we're gonna jump back to the beginning of our scheduled agenda here with item 1A is a quasi-judicial land use hearing. So at this time, I will open the public hearing to consider an application to annex 3322 Leonard Road into the Grants Pass city limits. We will begin the hearing with a staff report, followed by a presentation by the applicant, statements by persons in favor of the application, statements by persons in opposition to the application, and an opportunity for additional comments by the applicant and staff. After that has occurred, the public comment portion will be closed, and the matter will be discussed and acted upon by the council. Is there anyone present who wishes to challenge the authority of the council to hear this matter? Do any counselors wish to abstain from participating in this hearing or declare a potential conflict of interest?
Because of my previous involvement with this property, I'd like to abstain.
Thank you. Would you please step down from the dais? Are there any counselors who wish to disclose discussions, contacts, or other ex parte information they have received prior to this meeting regarding the application? In this hearing, the decision of the council will be based upon specific criteria which are set forth in the Development Code. All testimony which apply in this case are noted in the staff report. If you would like a copy of the report, please write that on a note to the city manager, and one will be provided. It is important to remember, if you fail to raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. The hearing will now proceed with a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, members of the public, Mr. Reese is a tough act to follow, so I'll just do my best. So as you stated, Mayor, this application is an ordinance to annex about 11 acres. This is out at the very, very southwest area of the urban growth boundary on Leonard Road. It relates to the council goal to facilitate sustainable and manageable growth by annexing property in the UGB. On the screen behind me is the map on the left. It shows the two parcels that we're talking about tonight, which total 11 acres together. Leonard Road is the frontage that provides access to these properties. The aerial that's shown on the right doesn't reflect some of the work that's being done. Couple of years ago, the city approved a subdivision on the property called the Buckmasters Subdivision. And this is now kind of a follow-up to that. One of the conditions was to come through later with the annexation. So under the Oregon revised statute, the city can annex land without a vote if you have 100% of the property owners or a triple majority. Michael Masters purchased the property to develop the subdivision from Buckmasters, and he is the sole owner. Here is the letter that was submitted with the application and requesting the annexation. Here's the criteria. You're quite familiar with these. There are six criteria that need to be met before property can be brought into the city limits. Those have been reviewed by staff and found that they met. The city surveyor verified the legal description on the property. It's contiguous to the city limits. And if you approve the ordinance tonight, then it will be sent to the Josephine County Assessor, the Oregon Department of Revenue, and they'll make their formal boundary adjustments. So here's the call to action for you. You can either adopt the ordinance to annex the 11 acres, continue the public hearing if you need more information, or deny the application.
Thank you, Brad. Council, do you have any questions? Counselor Pell?
Does that property currently, are they served by Grants Pass Public Safety? Or will they be added after the annexation? Are they currently served?
They are currently served, yes. This happens to be a property that had city zoning on it already. So yes, they were served.
Any other questions? All right, no questions. Is there someone here to speak on behalf of the application? The property owner wanting to speak? No? All right, is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of the application? All right, we will turn it back to council for discussion. Counselor Lovelace?
Yeah, I see no reason not to adopt. I know one of the things that's the nicest about annexation is that gives those people the right to vote in city elections. So I moved to adopt the ordinance annexing parcels 36-06-22-AA tax lots 500 and 502 into the Grants Pass city limits, and have it read by title only, first reading.
Seconded by Counselor Oje. Any discussion on the motion? No? All right. Valerie, you made the motion to annex the property. How do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
Counselor Oje?
Yes.
Counselor Younger? Counselor De La Grange? I didn't hear that. Okay, Counselor De La Grange voted no, and Counselor Younger has texted me, he is voting yes. So... Do my math here, we have four to one.
I'm here.
Counselor Younger voted yes, but Counselor Riker has stepped aside. So yeah, we are five to one. With two absent. No. Why am I off? I'm sorry. My math is bad tonight. Six to one. All right, six to one.
An ordinance of the council of the city of Grants Pass annexing 3323 Leonard Road into the Grants Pass city limits.
Five to one. That's where I was off. Rick didn't vote. Okay. Whew. People online, everything, it's a mess. I'm a mess. Are we gonna do the... We can't do the second... Are we going to do the, we can't do the second reading tonight? Okay, in that case, we will move on to item 1B regarding the community development block grants, and Ann is here to present on that.
On the way to the top? Yeah, you didn't close it out.
It's down there.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ann Ingles. Tonight's presentation will be the City of Grants Pass Community Development Block Grant. This will be the 2024-2025 Year Five Annual Action Plan. And its only needs and priorities is just to advise the council of what the survey presented. It does meet all the relationship to the council goals. Just a few updates. Program year 2022, the caper, which was the final report, was acknowledged in December by you. It was forwarded to HUD and approved in January 2024. We are currently exploring using CDBG microenterprize activity to support some startup childcare businesses. And we're working through the Oregon Department of Early Learning and some other resources out there. We're also discussing using CDBG funds to help with ADA improvements for the Performing Arts Center at the Grants Pass High School. And then we've also pledged $25,000 of CDBG funds for the all-inclusive playground at Redwood Elementary School. I would like to remind you that each of our CDBG hearings, HUD requires us to inform the public the nature of the program, how the city will manage the program, and we have to do that each year. We're required to inform them of the funds that we receive, how the city plans to use the funds, and at the end of each program year, how we use the funds and the goals we achieved. So their mandate is to have the public involved in every step of the way. The hearing tonight is the first of three hearings that we're required to hold in the new year. And it's just to apprise the council of the results of the needs and priorities survey that we will use those comments and suggestions in the 2024-2025 AAP. And it is specified in the city's CDBG Citizen Participation Plan that a public hearing is required. As before, you have heard that 70% of the CDBG fund must be used for lower and middle-income people. This year's five-year goals are similar to last year's. It's Exhibit A to your background: affordable and decent housing, homelessness, and non-housing community development. This page here is Exhibit B to the background. It's a summary of the comments we received. We opened the survey on February 12th. We closed it on March 29th. It was available on the city's website, emailed to CDBG contacts, and was posted on Facebook. This year, we received 88 responses, and they were questions on homelessness, affordable housing, community development, and public services, ranking them highest to the lowest in the need for the community. In homeless and housing, we had a higher percentage of permanent housing with supportive services, transitional and emergency and temporary shelters, medical respite housing, and special needs housing. Community development, job creation, retention, employment training, startup business activities, and assistance, commercial and industrial rehabilitation. Public services, we had more responses for homeless, addiction recovery, crime prevention, housing, senior, veteran, and youth services, job skills training as well. Public facilities, they would like to see navigation centers for the homeless, youth centers, childcare facilities, job vocational centers, and crisis centers. Public improvement and the infrastructures: code enforcement, trash and debris removal, downtown revitalization, improved transportation options, sidewalk and street alley improvements, and some water system improvements. This is a timeline of where we are. April 17th is where we are tonight. June 5th through July 8th, public comment of the draft five-year AAP will be out. August 7th, it will come back before you. Then August 15th will be the last day we can submit it to HUD. October 1 is when our program year starts. September 30th next year is when it ends. This is the fifth and final year of the 2020-2024 Five-Year Consolidated Plan, which is our second consolidated plan. A new five-year consolidated plan will be drafted next year for Program 2025. We have not received the award amount yet for Program 2024, this new one. And just to apprise you that last year's last program year was the final use of all the prior year's unspent funds, leaving only this year that we're in right now, Program 2023 funds to expend. The majority of the prior year funds were used for weatherization rehabilitation program, rehabbing homes for seniors, and others in the community in need of repair. Currently, for 2023, right now, you can see a table that shows what we've expended to date and what our balance is. The resource is CDBG funds. It does not, this public hearing does not commit funds. Projects in the new year, the new five-year AAP will be funded from CDBG funds. We do not know what those funds will be, and when we receive them, we will allocate them appropriately. Call to action. You just need to open the hearing to public for any other public comments. No other action is required tonight because it's just merely informational for you. And then following the public comment period in June and July, I will bring the draft Year Five Annual Action Plan back to you for review. Any questions?
Thank you, Ann. Questions? Rick?
Thank you, Ann. Can you go back to the slide with the funding allocations?
This one?
Yes, thank you. So in the bottom, it says Administration $31,000, and I realize $900,000. The purpose of that. So with that amount, what was the, that was extracted from the whole program during that time? What was the total of that program for that amount to appear?
Each program year, we are allocated 20% of the entire program year funding. This year, it was approximately $72,000.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Valerie?
Yeah, I'm just clarifying. We're, it talks about public facilities. The $25,000, is that for where, you were talking about the ADA access?
No, the $25,000, we've already pledged for the Redwood Elementary
Okay, that was
All-inclusive Playground. I do not have a dollar amount as yet to give to the Performing Arts Center. We do have $63,000 in there. So it'll just be a matter of what their quotes come in at, and then what, you know, Brad and I determined would be, you know, we would be able to use.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify, that was the money that went towards those projects? Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, this is a public hearing. So is there anyone from the public who wanted to comment on the community development block grants? All right, we will close the public hearing without comment. Counsel, did you have any follow-up discussion? Valerie?
I just want to let people know that this is money, this is federal money. So basically, CDBG funds are funds that come from the federal government to communities to help with, you know, homeless and those sorts of things. So this is not state. This is the federal block. And we, we used to get a small amount, and then we became a larger metro area. And when we did that, we were, consistently, every year, we get the amount of money. So it is, that was one of the positive things about, one of the few becoming a metro area.
Thank you. All right, no action expected on that tonight. We will move on and open the public hearing to consider an application filed by Mint, the Mobile Integrative Navigation Team. The resolution would authorize the city manager to approve a special use permit for Mint to operate a resource center and place pallet shelters for the site located at 218 Redwood Highway. We will begin the hearing with a staff report, followed by a presentation by the applicant, statements by persons in favor of the application, then statements by persons in opposition to the application, and an opportunity for additional comments by the applicant and staff. After that has occurred, the public comment portion will be closed, and the matter will be discussed and acted upon by the council. Is there anyone present who wishes to challenge the authority of the council to hear this matter? Do any councilors wish to abstain from participating in this hearing or declare a potential conflict of interest? Are there any councilors who wish to disclose discussions, contacts, or other ex parte information they have received prior to this meeting regarding the application? I'm just going to state that I personally have discussed with Mint some of their ideas for what they would like to do on the property, and I have visited the property. Yes, Joel?
So I've already, I had a brief conversation with Bruce on it too, down in the park.
In this hearing, the decision of the council will be based upon specific criteria which are set forth in the Development Code. All testimony which apply in this case are noted in the staff report. If you would like a copy of the report, please write that on a note to the city manager, and one will be provided. It is important to remember, if you fail to raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. The hearing will now begin with a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, council, members of the public. So one clarification at the outset here. So the application for you tonight is a special use permit. About three years ago, this council changed the city's code to create this type of permit. Prior to that, there wasn't anything in the code that would have a provision for any type of shelter or basic needs facility. So that was added in as a Type 4 permit. It does not replace the site plan. So there's two steps. You had, last month, you had On Track. And this is the same process, so that you have to, if you want to operate, whether in their case, more of a, you know, a rehabilitation-type facility that would still be considered a shelter, you have to get a special use permit first to just allow the use of the property for that need. If that gets approved, then they're, followed with that was a site plan. And the site plan is where specific issues like sewer, like water, like traffic, like placement of units and things are really nailed down. So that's why you'll see tonight, most of the information is related to just whether or not you, as a council, are going to authorize the use of the property. There's not a lot of detail related to the placement of the proposed pallet shelters, things, kind of two separate permits. So I just wanted to clarify that. The applicant is Mint, the Mobile Integrative Navigation Team, and is to operate a shelter facility. Again, that's the definition that you approved into the Development Code about three years ago, to operate a temporary shelter to be reviewed and approved in accordance with the 2017 Oregon Transitional Housing Code, and it's at 218 Redwood Highway. So on the map, it is the vicinity map here. This is Redwood Highway running here north-south on the east side of the property. This larger white piece is the Buy Mart. And this property, as you can see on this map, here's the aerial depicts that there are the two separate freestanding buildings on that property. The property to the south and the north, both owned by Buy Mart, as well as to the west, also owned by Buy Mart. And then here is the view from 28, from Sixth Street. So the applicant for this is Mint. They're a local nonprofit organization. This information is taken from the application that they submitted to the city. Their goal is to bridge the gap in access to quality medical care and to connect those who are unsheltered or unhoused with vital social, behavioral, and medical resources in the community. In terms of the property itself and the zoning, it is one tax lot. It's got the two separate buildings on it. It's zone general commercial. And it is under private ownership. Property is owned by a Thomas Parker, and Mint has a current one-year lease agreement with Mr. Parker. The proposal is to utilize the north existing building on the lot for the Resource Center for support services. And it also includes a proposal to put 15 pallet shelters behind that building on the backside. The special use permit would be processed, as I mentioned, as a shelter facility even though the, you know, the property's going to have both uses on it, the Resource Center in the main building that's up front on Sixth, and then the pallet shelters behind. In terms of the process, the city does require a pre-app conference that was held on March 7th. March 14th, they filed the application. And the process is basically coming straight to the city council. These applications don't go to the planning commission. And here's the definition of a shelter facility. This land use type is to provide temporary shelter for unhoused persons. The use may include emergency shelter in response to disaster events or severe weather, extreme or cold. As I think you all know, this site was the site of an emergency shelter this past winter. Shelter types can include stick-built, temporary structures, et cetera. The pallet shelters are also identified as one of the allowable uses on these properties. Food service, medical aid, and other supportive services can be provided. Sanitation and security must also be provided. That's part of the definition. So to that latter point, in terms of sanitation services, their application also includes a portable restroom and a shower that would be sited behind the primary structure near the pallet shelters. The 2017 Oregon Transitional Code, the council adopted that in 2019. The legislature in 2017 created this provision, which essentially allows for structures to be used for unhoused and other similar populations that do not have to construct the actual building itself to the Oregon Structural Code. That's what the Transitional Housing Standard is. It has several other requirements for what those are. And that was adopted prior to the Foundry Village project that was constructed over on Foundry. That is the same ordinance that they used to construct those 17 units. Page 30 of your council packet has a definition of what shared facilities are. And the ordinance that you adopted requires those shared facilities to be more like what we would call like brick and mortar, where the shower, the bathroom, has to be in a facility similar to what the Foundry Village is. However, the legislature changed the statute to have a less restrictive standard on that. And now the wording is that it may include restroom and shower facilities, but it doesn't define if those are permanent or mobile. but it doesn't define if those are permanent or mobile. So our city code requires that there be some kind of restroom and bathroom facility. But the ORS did change to allow for the, the temporary, so that is why the application, we have allowed it to proceed as it has to this point, because they are, as I mentioned, proposing a, a mobile shower and, in, in the back, not a permanent shower facility. So that is what you see on the bottom of the slide there. The staff recommends that you review the proposed facilities as part of this public hearing and ensure that the basic sanitation needs are met. Since the ORS changed, we, we think you have the ability to do that, but you do need to make that as a part of your deliberation today. And I think the applicant is ready to give more information on that, should you have any questions. Here are the six requirements for a special use permit. Requires a development operation plan, applicant operator qualification certification, they have to have had some experience in operating these kinds of facilities. They have to operate in compliance with city, state, and federal laws. The term of this special use permit is four years. At that point, they can submit for an extension, but they have to apply for that again. The special use permit can be revoked by the city at any time if they come out of compliance with the special use permit conditions. And then the temporary shelter has to meet state fire code. For the operation of the shelter that was open this past winter, the city's fire marshal did go on-site. They did need to have a second entrance, which they put on the back of the building to ensure that the ingress egress codes are met. In terms of their operations plan that's in the application, that's on page 39 and, and 40, there's, there's more detail there for you or for the public, whoever wants to read that. What's on here is just a few highlights in terms of what they've had, what, what they have proposed. Emergency procedures, staff must be trained in emergency response protocols, including evacuation procedures, first aid, and handling crisis situations. In terms of security, the Resource Center will have security measures in place to ensure the safety of all individuals, including surveillance cameras, security personnel, and secure entry-exit points. Reporting any incidents of violence, harassment, or safety concerns must be reported immediately to the appropriate authorities. In terms of the maintenance, they have to have a schedule for ensuring that the property is maintained, and they have outlined that in the application. And then safety measures, implement safety measures such as fire prevention protocols, lighting, and signage to ensure those are being met. So up to this point, staff reviewed the application. Jason Mackey was our planner assigned to that, he's been working with Mint and working through the, the process, did look at those and found that those were satisfied. Police department also reviewed the application, at this point has not indicated any concerns. So if you approve it, then the city council, you would authorize the city manager to basically approve a special use permit, which would be issued to Mint. So the call to action is, is tonight, but it's up at your discretion. There's no cost implications for the city, all the fees have been paid there. So the recommendation and the alternatives are there for you on the screen. You, it is a public hearing, so you obviously need to take that into consideration for making your decision, and there's a recommended motion for you.
Thank you, Brad. Counsel, do you have any questions? Counselor Pell.
Yeah, Brad, on slide eight, first sentence.
Is that the right one? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Is that correct?
Yeah, slide, okay, so it says the land, this land use type is to provide temporary shelter for unhoused persons. Can you define temporary, please?
So temporary shelter, in this case, essentially refers to that 2017 Transitional Housing Code, and so these are where the, the units themselves, wherever the people will be sleeping, are not on a permanent foundation. So in this case, the pallet shelters are essentially, you know, not put on a permanent foundation, they, they come from the manufacturer and are erected on-site, and they come, you know, with certain design standards that are already there. So that's, that's what really the temporary is referring to, these are, the, the shelter itself. The other examples that are in there are things like yurts or, you know.
So it's, it's the shelter itself that's temporary, it doesn't refer to the duration of the stay?
That's correct. The city's ordinance does not refer to that.
Are there any other questions? Counselor King.
Well, first off, I want to applaud Mint for taking this on. It, it is a worthy effort to serve the population and not impact park users. That, that is, that is a great goal. I had a question for the chief and perhaps for Mint. Under guest rules, it has substance use. Now, when Foundry Village first came on, we had measure 110, or possession of illegal, well, they weren't legal, I guess they were illegal drugs at that time. That has since changed to now possession of illegal drugs. And so I was wondering, is, if, if somebody has illegal drugs and staying in the shelter, the, the policy or, or the police, how, how do you look at that? Because now those, possession of those drugs are illegal.
I think that question would not be for me unless we were investigating a call for service. I think that question would be more suited towards the applicant.
Towards the applicant? So, so I would, I would assume you're not going to tolerate any illegal activity on-site, including possession?
Joel, we're just asking questions of staff right at the moment. Do you have a question for?
Yeah, I got a question.
For staff?
Oh, for, oh, just for staff, okay, okay. What I heard you say was you would just get into that with an investigation? Yeah, okay, that, that gives Bruce time to think.
All right, yeah, we are doing count, questions right now, and our, our city attorney is listening online, and he's reminding us to ask questions that are regarding the land use application. Counselor Riker.
Thank you, Brad. Can you go to slide 11? So under security, it says security personnel. On security personnel, does that mean you just find somebody and designate them as security, or do they have to be trained? Are you aware of the qualifications for that?
So that's also a question for the applicant, the city's ordinance requires that there be a description of how they will handle the security, but it doesn't set specific parameters for what that looks like.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions? All right. Would the applicant, is the applicant planning to speak? If so, please come forward to make your presentation.
Hello, thank you guys for considering this and for your time. I'm going to try to make this brief because I think most of the people in the room understand what we're doing and our intent. A few things that I do want to solidify in the application and presentation is, Mr. Parker is here, if anyone wants to ask questions, he is the property owner, and we have every intent of making our relationship long-term as far as extending our rental agreement and or purchasing the property. But there was no point in moving forward in that conversation if the SUP wasn't approved, so this was the first step. So just if that was a concern for anyone. As you guys know, we've been supporting unhoused in our community for the last two years. We do it by providing outreach in the park. We're also aware that not every community member loves that we're there, and so we've been mindful of that, but at the same time, we want to continue serving the people that we're serving. Mr. Parker actually approached me about the property one time when he was handing food out to, to some elderly folks that live in the park, and so that's how the conversation came, and it really is a perfect location for us to be able to provide the same services we do on Thursday, but in a way that is less friction inducing and more, more, we'll be able to do it more because we'll have a building, right? And so we're really excited about that. To put it into numbers and lives, in March alone, we got five people into shelter. We got one person into an outpatient treatment program. We supported one person that's currently on a waiting list for inpatient treatment. Medically, we treated more than two dozen folks, and I'll let Dr. Murray talk to you a little bit more about that. So that's just what we do on Thursdays for a couple hours in the park. Being able to do that five days a week in that building with amazing staff that we already have identified is going to be pretty exciting. Additionally, just to give some context to the pallet homes, that's kind of second phase, we want to get the navigation, we can open it in as early as tomorrow if it's approved, we're ready to move forward and do the next steps. The pallet homes obviously is going to take some additional planning, but we wanted to be proactive and let the city know what our intent was. And ultimately, you know, for, for the use of those right now, and what we've talked, discussed with our board of directors, is utilizing them for those that are medically fragile, that we're assisting each week in moving parks that can't do it themselves, and giving them a safe haven. And so that's really kind of the intent of, of our purpose of those 15 homes at the time.
With that, Dr. Murray, Leah, do you have anything to add?
I don't have anything prepared, I was asked to do this about an hour ago. But anyway, I'm always delighted to talk about what Mint is doing from a medical standpoint. Just since we were here the last time, we've made some impressive improvements and new partnerships and collaborations with several organizations. Thanks to Rogue Retreat in Medford, we've been able to place a half dozen people in medical respite. These are people that were too medically fragile to leave the hospital, but they had to leave the hospital, and we were able to get them care for three to six weeks in Medford, where they are safe, warm, fed, and we, the members of the Mint team have been going over to Medford to see people over there who need our help. We've also made new collaboration with Siskiyou Community Health Center. They have an interim CEO, Dr. Joe Dunn, who told me that Siskiyou Community Health Center has 600 people who self-identified on their roles as being unhoused. What we are doing now is we can work directly with Siskiyou to help them access those people. That's what our, that's what Mint's medical team and outreach is all about, is access to care that's already in the community, and we're working collaboratively, not only with Siskiyou, but also obviously with All Care, we're on community medical advisor for healthcare of the homeless, and we just met the new CEO at Asante yesterday, Patrick Sharp, who also pledged to work with us. We have members of All Care and Asante sitting at the same table on the Mint board. In my 35 years in Grants Pass, I don't believe that's happened before. So we are making impressive improvements, and as Cassie said, these shelter homes are not just for anybody who are the highest bidder, they're for the medically fragile that should not be living in the circumstances they're living in now, but through poverty, age, and disability, need the help to be moved even once a week from one park to the other, much less get by day-to-day. So we'll be able to help those people. We are not going to be a complete medical facility, I prefer to call it a first aid station, but we will be able to provide rudimentary medical care and triage. When we were open as a shelter recently, we frequently had to send people to the hospital, to the emergency room, that otherwise would not have gone for care. Why do they come to us? Because they trust Cassie, they trust the team, and they know that we're going to look out for them.
While I'm thinking about it, just to get in front of the security question, our intent is to be nimble and move the way we need to move. We had a security plan in place for our temporary emergency shelter, and it worked out great. We had no incidences, so we tend to move forward with that particular security plan and pivot if we need to. Do you want more details on that, or?
Well, I, I just want to, your, your policy that you exhibited here on substance that, and it was a good policy, that guests cannot use at the shelter. I just wondered if that, the illegal activity of, of possessing them also needs to be part of that.
I think sometimes low barrier is misunderstood, and so one of the thing that Mint has done is we have rules. When we had our low barrier warming center, we had rules, and one of the rules is no drugs. If someone breaks the rules, where I define low barrier is we don't kick them out and say, "Get out of here," we pause, we look at the rule, we make sure the rule is fair, we look at the situation and we deal with it accordingly. But it's not like, I mean, to be fully transparent, if someone has drugs on them, we're not going to kick them out and say, "Never come again," we're going to say, "Listen, there's some rules, can we mutually agree to this, maybe have a signed agreement?"
Yeah. That sounds really good.
Are there any other questions? Counselor Riker.
Thank you. I think this is a step in the right direction. I was wondering, do you have an application process that you've used or will be using to ensure the safety of people?
As far as?
Like a background check or something like that?
For the volunteers or for the folks that will be at the facility?
Actually, be both.
So for the volunteers, yes. For anyone that is providing care to vulnerable folks, there is a background policy that we actually just developed and are implementing. So, you know, us grassroots, we're now crossing our i's, dotting our t's, so that is going into effect hopefully by next month. Regarding the people staying there, I don't know that I've explored a background check for them, or that I, that would be something that we would need to do unless it's a requirement. But no, there, there was no intent to do that.
Any other questions?
Sorry, I did want to also mention, I'm Leah Swanson, I'm operations for Mint, and I wanted to mention that we work closely with our Grants Pass Police Department, we meet with them at least monthly and have open phone calls and emails all the time, and we take their advice really to heart. It's very important to us to continue a good relationship with them, safety is certainly a concern for us. And that is why we're going to use models and look at others who are doing things really successfully and have had great safety, and we're going to try to implement those things that are already well-worn, we're not going to try to reinvent the wheel. Other people are already doing this successfully across the nation, and we're going to try to utilize that information.
Thank you. Anything else? Questions? Counselor King?
I just had one short question of curiosity, actually, and I, I don't want to waste our time. That area seems awful small for 15 pallets.
Well, you know what, that's what happens when you have a nurse and a medical assistant doing math with things. I do think we can fit them, I really do, but we, we figured up to 15, we think we could cram 15 on there. Will we put 15? Not sure, so.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please stand up and state your name and let us know whether or not you live in the city.
David Dapper, city resident, and I see win-win. They're not going to have Freddie Fentanyl in these places, they're going to be some of the older people that are, that shouldn't be in the park. Give them somewhere safe, and it's really needed to be done, and hopefully the city can follow suit with a campground, because regardless of the Supreme Court, abracadabra ain't going to make it get fixed. Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Mayor.
Ruth, can you pull that down?
Yes. My name's Ruth Daley, and I live in Grants Pass, and I'm here in support of the resolution authorizing the city manager to approve a special use permit for Mint, the Mobile Integrative Navigation Team, to operate a resource center and place pallet shelters for the site located at 218 Redwood Highway, also known as Parker's Place. This is an ideal setting, in-town and close to resources. Mint has a solid and dedicated leadership team and board of directors, thoughtful and extremely hard-working volunteers, partnerships with wonderful experienced agencies, with individuals working to make Grants Pass a better place, and most important of all, community and relationship with our unhoused friends and neighbors, who are not only a part of the aforementioned groups, but who teach and help inform Mint's mission and daily work. In my observation, Mint's use of evidence-based tools and research coupled with relationship make for a concrete base for Mint to continue to succeed in its mission of bridging the gaps, striving for equity, improving lives. In its short life, I have seen Mint bring positive connection and needed resources to our unhoused neighbors, as well as needed change and awareness within our community. With a resource or navigation center, these connections will have fertile ground to grow. The will of the people moves toward this direction, not against it, as the most vocal minority would like to have us believe. These are our families and neighbors. They already are and deserve to be a part of our community, not relegated to a piece of property out of town, out of sight, out of mind. I know this because both my son and my brother lived unhoused. I know this because both my son and my brother lived unhoused for many years. Grants Pass has the possibility to become an example for other cities rather than for its current status. I think we need to take that chance and work with Mint on making this a success. A navigation center is a big win for the whole of our community, and I urge the council to approve this resolution. Thank you.
My name is Tommy Drake. I don't live in the city, but I have been working in the city for years and years and years. You've seen me before with tourism and the Arts Committee, et cetera. So what I would like to say is I've been a volunteer in the parks, serving coffee on Thursdays. Many of the people that I see look and act just like you and I. We aren't druggies, we don't tolerate it, but through circumstances we can't necessarily have prevented, we ended up that way, or they did, I didn't, but they did. And there are definitely people that have drug problems and drug issues. Those people need help. They don't need to stay in the park and die there. That's not a good thing. And the way that I see it, Mint is doing miraculous work, Dr. Murray in particular, for helping people and getting them well. He takes them to the hospital when they need it. They don't even know sometimes that's what they need. So I think this is helping folks hand up is really the way to go, and I would greatly appreciate your support of this project. Thank you.
I'm Mara Johnson. I'm living Grants Pass. I am currently homeless, and I have, since I've been homeless, the Mint program has been a very big help. I don't know where I would be if I didn't get approached by Mint. I would like to actually use their resources that they're going to be opening to get more help where I need to get housing or whatever I need to do to accomplish to be off the street. I would also, it's something I, there's a lot of people who do need help, and the Mint's always there to help out when it's needed. When I had my gallbladder surgery, they were there every step away to be sure everything was going well, even though I was left, I was homeless when I had my gallbladder surgery. So I'm glad they did, were there when I needed them. So I would like to see the resource center to be open, so I can get more accomplished in my life that I need, I want to do with other people, like HIV Alliance, that they work hard with, and just want to get more help than the Mint's offering.
Hi, I'm Julie Hartford, a resident of Grants Pass. I'm here tonight to represent the PATH organization and a core group of individuals who are working to bring Recovery Cafe to Grants Pass. Both groups are 100% behind Mint and strongly encourage the council to approve their request for a special use permit so that they can open their navigation center or resource center along with 15 pallet homes. Mint is the perfect example of what a caring group of citizens can do when they see a need in our community and work together to find creative and effective solutions. Mint has made a major difference in the lives of many of the unhoused in our community. I see this proposal as a win-win situation for our city. Mint is already highly respected by other organizations in the city. Having the Parker's Place base as a navigation and/or resource center will increase the positive impact that they have on our community as a whole, in addition to making a difference for the people who are in our parks who wish to get their health and their lives back. Thank you.
My name is Raymond Kelly, but they call me Gene. So Gene Kelly, for sure. And I spent 100 days, actually half of that, 50 days of the last part of my son's life, who was homeless, for the last seven out of the 10 years of his life in Eugene, Oregon. He was assigned a hospice nurse, who very tenderly, with much love that warmed my heart, to see this hospice nurse tend to a very serious badly infected wound. Unfortunately, we need to be a community of rules, and one of the rules was the nurse could not perform medical attention to my son if he did not have a sanitary place to receive the medical treatment. As a result, he missed many times a chance to receive the very urgent need that he needed. I come before you because I love this city so much, and I love the people. I like the climate, by the way. It's not only the climate here, it's the people, warm hearts that warmed my heart also. And as a result, it is my fervent hope that you will provide a place that has warm hearts and sanitary conditions, so that other people will not be denied the very urgent help that they need. Please supply this for the people that are very much in need for a warm-hearted sanitary place. I thank you with all my heart.
I'm Kelly Moody. Many of you already know me because I probably had your kids in school. Retired teacher, Grants Pass School District and the college. And I'm also a rogue gateway rotarian, and it was through rogue gateway rotary that I was introduced to Mint and subsequently became one of the people that shows up on Thursday morning, along with several of these people, to serve breakfast to this vulnerable piece of our community. We give them breakfast that's very high protein, and we also provide coffee, tea, that sort of thing. Maslow comes, the food pantry comes. We have, of course, the medical team that also has their mobile unit as well. We also provide clothing, hygiene. There are so many aspects that make up this need in our community for us to help. And now to have the opportunity to have a place, the Parker Place, for us to do more and to do it on a more regular basis, how could we turn this down? We should only be moving forward, and I hope you all feel that same way. I feel privileged to be a part of this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wanted to speak on behalf of the application? Is there anyone who wanted to speak in opposition of this application? All right. At this time, I will come back to staff and the applicant. Did you have any additional comments? No comments from staff? Okay. In that case, we'll close the public hearing and turn it back to counsel for your consideration. Valerie?
Yes, I am also very proud of this group because they have stepped up to the plate and done basically what we've been asking for from a grassroots level, which is say, we do have a wonderful community, and we will step up to the plate and make something happen. So thank you so much for that, and I'm going to move to approve the request for the Mobile Integrative Navigation Center, Mint, to operate a shelter facility and develop temporary shelter to be reviewed and approved in accordance with the 2017 Oregon Transitional Housing Code for the site located at 218 Redwood Highway.
Second by Vanessa. Discussion. Twain?
Thank you. I just want to say, tonight, we're here to review the applicant's request, and are they following the ordinance that the city governs by? And that is all we're going to be doing tonight, is the applicant's request to open up this temporary shelter, not temporary, but shelter facility. And I would agree that it is, it does follow the rules, and that's what I'm going to be voting on tonight, is the applicant's request following the ordinance, and I believe it is. And I just want to do, because I didn't get to speak earlier, I want to thank Tom Parker for offering his property up, and I've known Tom for 40-some years, and I did talk to him a few months ago, and he was beating some people in the park, and I know Tom's heart, and I think he's, I believe he feels he's doing a good thing, and I'm glad that this is something that Tom wanted to do, to work with Mint. And I also like the location. I think it's going to have a little impact on the residents around this facility, and I'm going to be voting yes, and I just want to say good luck to Mint and doing the best they can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? All right. Hearing no further discussion. Valerie, you made the motion to approve the request. How do you vote?
Yes.
Counsel King?
Yes.
Counsel Pell?
Yes.
Counsel Dela Grange?
Yes.
Counsel OJ?
Yes.
Counsel Riker?
Yes.
Counsel Yunker?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. All right. Next up, I'm going to get back to item 2E. On the agenda was a motion to re-adopt the city's budget financial policy. They don't want to stick around for you, J.C.?
I was never the popular one in school, anyway.
It's the buzzkill budget talk. Here we go.
Good evening, mayor and counsel. I'm J.C. Rowley, the finance director. I'm going to be going over the city's budget financial policy. Give you a little background first, then we'll talk about the fund balance requirement edits that were proposed by council, and then relationship to council goals. We're going to provide cooperative, shared leadership involving council staff and the community. So as part of the background, on April 1st, 2024, council gave staff direction to bring forward potential edits to the adopted fund balance policy, specifically reducing the general fund requirement. Since 2011, there was a resolution or, yes, a resolution passed that council has had the current budget financial policy, which required general fund ending target range of 30% to 40% of expenditures. It further read that this is due to the seasonal nature of property tax revenues mostly being collected in November of each year. The beginning of November is approximately 33% of the way through a fiscal year and is available to cover the general fund expenditures before the large property tax receipts in November. So last year, the council gave temporary relief to the general fund, to the policy, to approximately 28% to 38% of the expenditures to help balance the fiscal year 24 budget. On October 24th, 2023, staff provided council with a council memo number 062-2023, GFOA Rethinking Reserves. This was a 29-page document prepared by Governmental or Government Financial Officers Association regarding reserve balances and the other relatable issues, which did include credit rating and debt service, and I'll get into that in just a little bit. And the document does lend merit to potentially decreasing the reserves down to 25%. So further in the memo, GFOA, which is an international-based financial officers association, does talk about Moody's AA credit rating is set as a 25% fund balance as a minimum requirement to meet the AA, and we do currently meet that at our 30% to 40%. And currently, we do have a large water treatment plant project, WA 6207, which has already contracted small loans through Business Oregon. And I will say, through these loans, they are requiring general fund backing and be a future requirement of all future loans. Now, in the GFOA 29-page document, it does give an example in there about reducing your credit rating from a double A to a single A, which single A is about a 15% fund balance. Now, it does kind of nonchalantly talk about a $200 million project, and reducing your reserves from 25% to 15% only costs the city $8 million in interest costs in the future. I will say, $8 million for a city our size is relatively large, so we'll caution you on lowering it below that 25%. So in the packet, there's small edits to the fund balance requirements. The general fund is 25% to 35% as requested. Staff recommended a change to the garage operations fund, 15% to 25%. Now, again, this is kind of an older policy, and what we are realizing that this is more of an internal service, which normally operates between a 15% to 25% policy, and seems to be a little bit high for the activity that it does garner year in and year out. So the cost implication, there's not really a current cost for reducing the fund balance policy, but it does have a future impact. And so I was trying to show you through numbers in a graph chart here of a 30% fund balance policy right now, as it sits, for every dollar you spend, you need an extra 30 cents as far as your reserve. And for a 25% fund balance policy, you only need 25 cents. So obviously, the math works that it's obviously less of a requirement to the general fund. But if you flip it the other way and look at the new revenues in the future, the requirement for any new dollar with a 30% fund balance policy is 77 cents is the only amount that you can spend, whereas a 25% fund balance policy changes that to 80%. So it's not a very large impact, but it does have a future impact as far as the dollars you can operationally spend year in, year out, moving forward. So our call to action is a motion to re-adopt the city's budget financial policy. The alternatives would be to re-adopt the city's budget financial policy with the included revisions, reject the proposed revisions, or make further edits to the city's budget financial policy, and I have a potential motion up here, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, J.C. Are there any questions? Valerie?
Are there any other things coming upon us in the next few years that we will be needing, I mean, other than the water treatment plant, which hopefully we've done what we've needed to do for that, for taking loans?
I'm sure there will be construction projects, and Jason could probably speak more to that. I don't know if we're going to have one as large as the water treatment plant.
We've got several reservoir projects. We're self-funding, of course, Meadowwood. We're going to be coming before you for a roof for the city hall complex. That one, we're going to have to take out a loan. That'll be an internal loan, though, so it doesn't fall under the same criteria. It may be that as you move forward with the pool options, if you do move forward with that, that may require external borrowing. But there are some other projects coming down the pipeline that may or may not require borrowing, but we try to self-fund as much as possible.
Okay. There's two things that I can think of. Number one is the Public Safety Building. I know there will be a refinancing coming up. I don't know if that will be affected in any way by fund balancing. And then also, the URA, if we did, does our city rating apply to getting the loan if we were to go in debt for a larger URA project?
So there's two questions there. The first one, being the Public Safety Building, yes, obviously, that will need to have general fund backing because it will be a refinancing of an already existing loan. The second, I believe that, and I'll have to double-check this, but I believe that the URA does get the backing of the city, and it's not necessarily on its own, but it's kind of like how a water plant or a water project works, is the water fund does take on the responsibility, so the URA would take on the responsibility, but it still does need some backing.
Counsel Riker?
Thank you, J.C. I'm going to ask a question that you want to have the answer to.
I'm gonna ask a question that you won't have the answer to, and I don't think anybody have the answer to. So, the focus is on public safety for this very discussion. And if we look at the health of the city and look at the marketing aspects, would you say the health of the city and the growth of businesses and people attracted to coming here probably have a more substantial impact for creating revenue? Whereas, if we go, I want to say, if we get too stingy on how we're spending the funds, could we be robbing ourselves of that opportunity? Like I said, I don't think...
I'll try and answer or comment on your question comments. Yes, it's all interconnected, right? Public Safety Services, building, tourism, like, it's all interconnected, and it comes together. So, yes, the growth of our community does require inherently Public Safety Services and as well as the growth of new construction and all the other things that create a healthy economy.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Valerie?
Yes. One of the reasons that we've always kept the thirty percent is because of the property tax that, of course, comes in in November, and so we keep, because it's like thirty-three percent. So I know that's always been one of the reasons we've done that. Since we are now introducing a new form of revenue in the way of, through the water fee, through the public safety fee, that will bring in a different revenue source, will that have any impact or in any way on the...
Yeah, so the total dollar amount that we're projecting is about $3.4 million. So you divide by twelve, and obviously, there's going to be a third of that, potentially a million dollars, that would backfill. Now, we receive $14 million-ish right now in our permanent rate, another seven in our local option levy in November-ish, as with a majority, not all of it, but a majority of it in November. So, yes, it will help smooth out that gap that we've always used as far as the November thirty-three percent, which is why we've had that thirty to forty percent.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Did anybody from the public want to speak on the financial policy? All right. Look for those public comments and hand it back to council for discussion. Anybody want to get started?
I guess there's one more question I was gonna ask, but I guess I will just ask it in a way. I'm gonna assume that if we were to change the policy and move it to twenty-five to thirty-five and the fifteen percent or whatever, that at any point in time, it can be changed back up if we felt that we needed to. So this is just like something that can annually happen. I mean, I've been reading lately from other cities, just because I've been doing some research, and it is interesting that some of them are actually, were too low, and they're working to bring theirs back up again, which seems like it would be harder to bring it back up again than it is to let go of it, and that's my only kind of fear. But I also recognize that we could, you know, that twenty-five percent probably is ample. So I was just curious, your thought?
Yeah, so there's two questions there. So first is, I think I would like to procedurally make sure and check in once a year with this policy to make sure that it checks out right before budget time, so that way we are all on the same understanding of where we should be budgeting. And that'll probably happen somewhere between November and January. The other is, yes, there are cities in the state of Oregon that are instituting other policies to put money back into their reserves. It's kind of like credit card debt. You have to pay in more than what you're potentially spending, and it's a little bit harder to do that than it is to reduce your fund balance policy.
Counselor King?
Unless there's further discussion, I'll make the motion to re-adopt the city's financial policy attached as Exhibit A.
Sir, second. Seconded by Counselor Lovelace. Any discussion on that? Counselor OJ?
I think we would need with the included revisions for it to be the twenty-five to thirty-five percent. If you wouldn't mind amending your motion to state that?
So stated.
So stated.
Fifteen to twenty-five for the fleet or general operations funds, correct? So those are the two. So it's the twenty-five to thirty-five for the general fund and the fifteen to twenty-five percent for the general operations fund. So it's more specific.
Is there any further discussion? All right. Counselor Lovelace, you made the motion to re-adopt the city's budget financial policy with the included revisions, and how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
De La Grange?
Yes.
Counselor OJ?
Yes.
Counselor Riker?
Yes.
Counselor Yunker?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. And next on our agenda is a public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the city council on items not related to a public hearing or council action item before the council tonight. The intent is to provide information that is pertinent to the city's jurisdiction. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address the council as one body, not to individuals. At the conclusion of public comment, council will have an opportunity to respond. This meeting will proceed in an effective and courteous manner. Citizens and council members will be allowed to state their positions in an atmosphere free from slander, threats, or other personal attacks, signs or placards, outbursts of applause, campaigning for public office, or other disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. If you have a question regarding any government-provided service or a city policy, please contact the city manager's office in an attempt to resolve the matter. And I want to add that if you are here to comment about a specific city employee, I would like you to speak to the city manager rather than do that during public comment. So with that, please state your name and let us know whether or not you want to live in the city.
Mr. Fitch, Grants Pass resident. Mr. Clark has you guys in a federal lawsuit, because he's the one that's been assaulting your county for over ten years. And he's gotten a lot of you guys involved with his assaults in this town. Safety isn't your guys' concern. Ryan Clark had all you guys, the Daily Courier, Grants Pass Police Department, the sheriffs, the school districts, their kids, their religious cults, because Christianity isn't the only religion in this country, but you're taking it overboard.
Sir, are you here to speak about a city policy?
I'm talking about what's concerning me. You guys are taking money away from Grants Pass on federal lawsuits because you're not paying attention to the people telling you, you've got a problem in here. So I'm publicly putting this out to all of you. Oregon statutes on retaliation, you have an oath that says that you are professional on and off the job. You have a derelict of duties when somebody comes up to you and tells you, we have a problem, and you don't do anything about it. Hindering, obstruction of justice, stalking, unethical misconduct, aggravated harassment, police misconduct under the federal lawsuits. I'm not a federal lawsuit. I'm not the one that sits there and cries like a crybaby after you get caught doing something. Ryan Clark does that. Jared Allen Twiddle does that.
Sir, if you have issues with members of our staff, please take it to the city manager later.
Because this has everything to do with all of you. When you have him send his officers to me in town...
Okay. The council's going to be taking a recess right now for ten minutes. Immediately.
When he sends this to me in town, telling me that I'm a liar...
And get started again here in just a minute. I'm waiting for the TV to come back on.
Very appropriate.
All right. Let's continue with public comment, and I'll just remind everyone in the room that the meeting will proceed in an effective and courteous manner, and I want you to stay on topic with matters that are relevant for the city council. Please state your name and let us know whether or not you live in the city.
Mike Pelfrey. I am a city resident. It's a tough act to follow, even for me. But I would like to say, and I really meant to get up during, when Mint was doing their thing, so I figured I'd kill two birds with one stone and not just, just get up once. So I will say that I absolutely support what they did tonight and what they're doing, and I hope that that is a start for other organizations that are within our midst, that they follow that lead as well, because that does, that to me is something that is extremely positive. I want to just flip the subject a little bit. It's still on the homeless thing. One of the things that I'm a little concerned about is that we're getting a lot of attention. The city of Grants Pass is getting a lot of attention because of the Supreme Court case. And I don't know if, I mean, I'm hoping that I'm right about this, but you're welcome to correct me, and that is, I've read several articles where it says that, you know, homeless people have, are being arrested for being homeless. And I personally have never, I've never witnessed that, I've never heard of that. I don't know if that's a true statement, but I have read that in ink, and, you know, that's not a good look for our city. So I hope that our leadership will, when we have an opportunity, and let's say media does show up, that we can maybe correct that statement, because I don't think anybody's actually being arrested for the purpose of just being homeless. If they're homeless and maybe they are not abiding by our rules and our regulations and our ordinances, that's a different story. But just to be arrested for being homeless, that doesn't seem like an accurate portrayal. So other than that, I'm gonna keep it short, but I will tell you that I do support Mint, and I hope. And the other thing that I thought that was really good for them is the fact that they actually got up, and I've been calling for this many, many times, and that is, tell us some success stories. That's what we want to hear. We want to see that the resources that you're being provided, as well as the time and effort of what's taking place within our community, that you actually are doing something and you're gonna actually come up here and tell us, hey, this is who we've helped, this is how many we've helped. That's what I would like to really see a lot of, and I've called on that many times, where I would, you know, line them up and let's hear some success stories, you know, and get some positive feedback rather than just hearing the negative. So other than that, thank you. Have a great evening.
Was there anyone else who wanted to speak tonight?
Thank you for letting me talk. I'm Del Aldridge, City of Grants Pass. I'm gonna say that we've accomplished a lot in the year that I've been coming to these meetings. Last March was my first meeting, and I haven't missed but one, I think, the whole time. And in that short period of time, you've got a place where people that are on drugs will be able to go and get clean. As a matter of fact, at one of our park meetings, we had a number of people come up to us. Do we have a meeting in the park every week on Sunday, and I still invite all of you to come and visit one? And we had people come up to us, and we talked to them. We talked to them. She said, yeah, I'm on drugs. Well, they're gonna be the first one in line. They weren't even aware that you have something coming up and it works up on Rogue River Highway for that. And this Mint thing, totally behind it. The people at Recovery Cafe, totally behind it. They actually came out and gave us upfront what was gonna be going on there with Recovery Cafe, and we actually got some volunteers, hopefully to help them out. We're also paired up with the park watch, with the baseball that opened. The coaches asked us to come down before the first practice, and we, after, I was there very early, I was there at nine o'clock, because I wanted a place, it was gonna rain. So I wanted a place to get out there early. And I saw the whole city get cleaned, that whole park up. Within a couple of hours of the kids showing up, it was still, there was a big mess on top of that. The police came in and were just so professional, they cleared tents out. While I'm walking with one of the volunteers, we find two needles in the bushes, in the backfield. We find a crack pipe found with us group walking around. Now, park watch has gone, started a year ago with no, with two webpages, and it has boomed to over 700 people plus, or in this group. Now, we're not gonna fix the problem, that's not gonna be possible. Our homeless is always gonna be there, but we gotta have a plan for more places like Mint's doing there. We've got recovery covered, we've got a small place to cover. But if this comes down and it looks like we're gonna have 600 people homeless, Medford got it right. They worked their way up to that. We're still stepping in baby steps. We need to make some bigger steps and get these people out. Half the people in the park are not from here. They've heard about how easy it is to get drugs. And what really bothers me the most is our park watch is very actively following drug dealers, reporting on them. In my own parking lot, we had a red car show up. We have a judo place, we have a toddler place, we have a Mexican, we have a ice cream shop. And he actively was selling drugs right in our parking lot, in view of all the people. I took a videotape of it. And he ran away and disappeared. It was all over the Facebook. Then it showed up as a green car. He colored it green. Can you believe this? Then people started reporting him selling drugs at this location. So, and my time's up. Please, come to our meeting.
Is there anybody else?
Catherine Hamilton, County. Mint, awesome. They're really trying, they're doing what really needs to be done, one of the many steps that needs to be done for this homeless situation we're going through. On my travels, I ended up going down to Fruitdale Park. Big surprise. Seventeen tents there, week before last, there's probably twenty now. There's a lady down there with a sick cat while I went down. She's got one eye. She's sixty-three years old, living in a tent with one eye and a cat. She's 63 years old, living in a tent with one eye and a cat, and a sick cat. I go down there Monday night, Monday, Sunday night, I don't know, they're blurring. There's an 82-year-old man with a diaper on, living in the park, in a tent. He cannot take care of himself. I hear him yelling at her, please, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be such an A H. Could you just try to call somebody? Mint had taken him out there over the weekend when they had to move him. And he was needing help. I don't know protocol. I don't know what you guys can do. But if you could maybe somehow give Mint some, some of these people should not be moving around. They're trying to do something. They're going to hopefully have these houses, these little pallet houses up and going. It's going to, it's not going to be tomorrow. These folks are going to have to be out by Saturday. I don't know if there's anything you can do about, because they have to be moved. And I get that. And your guys, Saturday at Morrison, to see them come in and haul people out in handcuffs an hour before the kids' Little League games, it was sincerely appreciated. And yeah, the needles and the pipe were found where three balls went over the fence for the fly balls. But anyway, if maybe something, because the Mint people are aware of a lot of these people that have medical issues, if maybe there was some way you could just leave them alone and let them stay there. I know that would be probably against, because you've got all the junkies on the other side of the park. But an 82-year-old man in a diaper getting moved around in a tent once a week. I just wish there was something that could be done soon. Thank you.
Hi. David Dapper, city resident. This is true. We need a place where they can all go, like a rogue retreat has. And maybe we could get away with some infrastructure ads and some, you know, I'm sure you guys can get together and find a place. Because if they can go somewhere and be, the people that are vulnerable will come to the front to be monitored. And the junkies will go to the back. It's just, it's just the way it works. It'll get separation. And the people that truly want and need help will be able to get filtered off the top of that. Because every corner of this town isn't a safe place to be. I mean, wouldn't it be easier, Chief Hensman, if you had one spot where you could kind of monitor and make sure they were safe instead of every alley and corner of the city? I'm sure maybe ARPA funds and other things like that available, grant money, we could set aside something, maybe something out Spalding Avenue where, you know, where it would be in an industrial area and they could be safe and monitored. Anyway, thank you.
Is there anybody else wanting to speak tonight? All right. We'll close public comments. And I guess I wanted to address a couple of the comments. Mike Pelfrey had the question about whether the homeless are being arrested for being homeless. And I think the answer to that is definitely no. I think there have been situations where people receive fines or perhaps get arrested for not leaving public spaces is the, you know, the charge of trespassing or having a tent erected in a place where it's not supposed to be. And ultimately, I think the argument here before the Supreme Court is whether or not that makes them arrested for the act of being homeless when they don't have another place to go. If they're not supposed to be on public property, if they're not supposed to be on private property, where are they supposed to be? So we do have the Supreme Court hearing or oral arguments coming up on Monday. And I guess it's nice, you know, we have a little victory tonight in terms of helping Mint move forward on their act of establishing a shelter here in Grants Pass. That will be a nice addition to this issue. We have a complex problem and it needs complex solutions. And it's going to need a lot of different solutions. There's not just one magic bullet. But, you know, to address what somebody asked about the one spot, absolutely. It's easier to keep an eye on one spot than every, every spot around town and alleys and bushes and parks. So we need to keep moving forward on this. I think, you know, I'm glad to hear so many community members now in support of the idea of establishing shelters and urban campgrounds. I know that several of us, when we took office in the beginning of 2021, visited rogue retreats facilities over in Medford right before we took office. And we thought that they were doing a really great job. And at that time, they had a campground and a congregate shelter and a tiny home village. And they explained to us how that different facilities met the needs of different types of people at different steps along their journey to getting back off the streets. And it made a lot of sense. And we came on board in 2021 and wanted to get something started here in Grants Pass. And here we are, three years later, finally on the verge of getting some of those things going. So it's been a long road, I guess. And so many people are coming around to the idea that we had several years ago. So that is very great to hear. And Dwayne says he has something to say as well.
I'll just make mine brief. I just had a couple of things. I wanted to make a response to this 80-year-old, 82-year-old man that someone was talking about. That sounds like a DHS problem that they need to be involved with. If there is an elderly that, in that kind of condition, I would assume, I didn't work for elderly and abuse, I worked for children before. But this seems like someone that DHS needs to get involved with and would fit their criteria for someone that needs help. And I just want to do, say the same thing I think the mayor did. I think everybody did come together tonight and agree upon what Mint is doing. And that this is not affecting anybody in their homes or where they're living. But it's actually a good thing that it's going to be hopefully moving some of our most vulnerable people out of the parks that are willing to get help. And I will always be for appealing to people that want to get help. And I just, I know there's some other people that are doing things with some other shelter ideas. And I want to let people know that, sorry if you hear some background noise here. I know some other people that are working on some other projects that will be for very, very, very low, low-income elderly housing, hopefully in the next year. And I think that's going to be very nice for those people that are on very, very low income that can't afford anything. Thank you.
Counselor King.
So one of the things I've learned in my short but long life is to celebrate success. And one of the things that kind of hasn't been noticed, because they do it very quietly, is Foundry Village. They have, through their rotations, over the last four years, 80 people a year that get transitioned off the street. So that's 320 people. And that's equivalent to a campground. And they're doing a great job. And they had some struggles when they first started up with some administrative stuff. They got that straightened out. But Foundry Village has been up and operating now for four years. And they've been doing it very quietly. And that's a good thing. So hats off to them. Oh, the other thing, that 320 people, that would be half of the point in time count when they started. Because it was about 600. So, and that number goes down or up? I would guess that it goes up. But they took care of half of the point in time over the next four, the last four years.
Anybody else wanting to make comment? All right. How about an email review? Karen?
There were none.
Okay. Got them all. And with that, let's see, move on to consent agenda. These items are of such routine nature or without controversy that they may be approved with a single action. And it sounds like Counselor Riker is going to read the consent agenda tonight.
Consent Agenda 4A. Resolution authorizing the city manager enter into a hydrogeological master services agreement with PBS Engineering Environmental LSE for the Merlin landfill closure. Item 4B. Resolution authorizing the city manager to enter contract for the Grants Pass skate park repairs. Project number LP 6189. Item 4C. Resolution to amend membership structure for the Tourism Advisory Committee. 4D. Resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for Sixth and Seventh Street multi-modal corridor study. 4E. Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the US 199 and Redwood Avenue Plan. 4F. Motion to continue providing two portable toilets at the Riverside Park West location. 4G. Motion approving the minutes of the City Council's special meeting of April 1st, 2024. 4H. Motion acknowledging the minutes of the Tourism Advisory Committee meeting of March 5th, 2024. 4I. Motion acknowledging the minutes of the Parks Advisory Committee meeting of February 8th, 2024. 4J. Motion acknowledging the minutes of the Collaborative Economic Development Committee meeting of February 22nd, 2024. 4K. Motion acknowledging the minutes of the Urban Planning Commission meeting of March 13th, 2024. 4L. Motion acknowledging the minutes of the Historic Buildings and Sites Committee meeting of February 8th, 2024. That's the end of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Did you want to make a motion?
I can make a motion. The consent agenda be approved as stated.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Oje. We don't discuss the consent agendas. So Counselor Riker, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Lovelace?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
Counselor DeLaGrange?
Yes.
Counselor Oje?
Yes.
Counselor Youngker?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Mayor, council comments? Did you have anything you wanted to bring up tonight? Counselor DeLaGrange?
Thank you. It feels like it's been quite a while since we've had an update on the water treatment plant project. So I think it'd be nice to get an update on that, whether that's in workshop or memo form. But I'm hoping I could get a couple of counselors to agree to that.
Yes. Are you interested in a memo? Yes. Okay.
Jason and I just talked about that today in our one-on-one. Do you want to give them an update on what we talked about?
I do, yeah. We were actually discussing when we should get back in front of you. We're, we've just finished up 60% design. And we're at a point where we should have a firm number in the next two weeks based on the 60% design. That'll shift around a little bit. But the 60% is what we call our first GMP. And we're having the contractor go out and bid all of this work, even though we're still at 60%. So like I said, we really want to get in front of you, show you where we're at, talk about the pricing, where we're at with all the financing pieces. But we did just have that, like, hours ago to get it on your agenda. So we're thinking the same, the same way.
Great. Thank you.
Aaron's going to make a note of that to put it on a workshop. And anything else? All right. Staff comments? Anything?
Yeah, I just have a couple. One, I wanted to start off with, I had in my notes here just to mention that it is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And wanted to just give a shout out to all of our call takers and 911 dispatchers. They are true first responders and part of an amazing team that we have. You know, Kristen and Marcy and Trianna and Kayla. And there's so many people there that are just doing a great job. And I want to thank them for that and being part of that first responder team. And which goes into something that just occurred this evening that I want to do a shout out to also when we're speaking of team. One, I want to commend the mayor for maintaining decorum during this meeting when dealt with a hostile situation. That was an extremely professional leadership role for you to take. It deescalated, it was a first step to de-escalation. And I appreciate that, Mayor. The other thing I do want to shout, do a shout out to is, is I recently was able to do a ride-along with Lexi, who is one of our K-9 officers. And I saw some great professionalism and patience associated with her and in the experience that she had and my experience, what I saw when I was out there. But what was amazing is with her patience and her professionalism and her demeanor and how she de-escalated situations when I was on my ride-along, brought something to mind today, which you were able to briefly see, which was, that starts at the top with our, with Chief Hensman. You were able to see just briefly Chief Hensman in a situation where he was dealt with a hostile and elevated situation, de-escalate and take care of it in a professional manner. What I stepped out and saw, you, what you saw briefly there continued. And his professionalism and demeanor was amazing. He's a true leader. And I greatly appreciate what you did this evening, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I was darn glad to have you there. All right. Any other comments from staff tonight? Jason?
Go ahead, Brett. I just have one brief notice, kind of important one. We will be sending out notices of a street closure on G Street for Monday. We're posting it for a pretty wide window, 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM. We don't anticipate it's going to go anywhere near that. But we have to dig up the street and put in a new water line for the Welcome Center. So that's, we did have crews out canvassing all of the businesses. Monday was the best day in general for them. So they'll be out very, very early, starting at 6:00 AM. They won't be making noise till 7:00, though, because our noise ordinances prohibit that. But we will be getting everything ready to go, get that water line in and get out. Detours will be in place, signage. And then the noticing, we're going to post it pretty aggressively. So it'll be notice on both, on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday with pushes, just to make sure that people see that. So just wanted to give you guys an early heads up on that.
And I just had two quick, oh, sorry, counselor. I just had two quick community development things. One, just a reminder that you received from Aaron a couple of days ago, an email of the construction excise tax request for proposal. So this is our first RFP using the CET money. So there's quite a bit in there. But hopefully you get a chance to look at that. We'd really appreciate your thoughts on that. The second thing is, as an outcome of one of our one-on-ones with the city manager, we talked about all of the upcoming amendments that relate to the Home Builders Association. We've had a number of conversations, as you know, and a lot of them tied to code amendments. I was just jotting this evening, private streets, utility easements, building heights and setbacks, some additional exceptions for minimum density. And those are only a few. We also have, the legislature's got two rulemaking committees that are active right now related to new housing issues. So we're expecting some more rules coming out from that soon. So we are at community development, struggling to keep up with all of these changes and putting these together. So we talked about a, putting out a short RFP for a consultant that would help us do some code writing. And we would meet with them regularly and kind of put these, kind of package it all together so that rather than doing piecemeal, we can bring, you know, a single package to you. So I just want to let you know that we're kind of moving ahead on that. That would be within the city manager's authority, spending limit of a maximum $100,000. We don't think it's going to be that. But we'll be putting that out soon to kind of help us get through this. So just a couple of things for you.
Rick?
During the summer months, when the sun comes up earlier and you're dealing with a situation with a noise ordinance of 7:00 AM, do we, the council, have the option of extending or modifying that time for a specific situation, especially in a commercial district?
Yes, we do, you do have the ability. Some companies do have the ability to get a special use permit to either work beyond either the evening or the morning. And some have exemptions, such as your franchise agreement, agreements for the solid waste haulers. They can operate outside of that to some degree.
So does that take a special hearing and a special meeting to approve that?
I know that those have come forward for like night work on the highways where they're going through residential areas. Those have to come through you. I would assume, I'd have to look in the codes specifically to see what it says, but for noise at night, I would assume that takes counsel.
With a special meeting? Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Vanessa?
I move to adjourn.
Thank you, seconded by Valerie. All in favor of adjourning this evening, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned.